I call this meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors to order October 13, 2021. I apologize for the late start for the meeting. Please forgive my senior moment. I had forgotten my, all my papers at home. Had to rush home and get them. First item is we have a couple of announcements on the agenda. An executive session was held on September 29 to discuss a personnel matter. And the second announcement is that Pam Robb and I met, along with township staff, met. We represented Chick-fil-A and there's a short report included with your agenda. And we, both Pam and I, think feel fairly positive with the progress made at the meeting. So we'll be able to report at a later date on progress that have been, that has been made on trying to ameliorate the traffic problem in front of Chick-fil-A on North Atherton Street. Next item, a pledge of allegiance. If you're able, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Next item, additions to posted agenda. I know we have one request for, to add an item to the agenda under the de minimis provision of the act that is appropriate or relates to this. Supervisor Whitman, do you wish to make?
I do. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. At the last meeting of the Board of Supervisors, we, it was suggested by one of our very active citizens, Valerie Burnett, that the Board of Supervisors reach out and make a request to our federal elected officials that they support the budget reconciliation bill. And she, we asked her if she would actually craft the letter. She is very knowledgeable about many environmental issues. She did. It was very well researched, came from the heart and the head, and...
But, Betsy, we'll have a discussion of it. We're just adding it to the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can't, may we add it to the agenda? Thank you. I forgot.
Yeah, I'll put it, I'll put it after public comments. It'll be the first item under three presentations in public hearing.
Thank you, Dan. Yes. So, but we have to vote for that. Is that correct?
Well, if it's de minimis, the chair can make that determination and add it to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Betsy. I'll make the determination that we will add this to our agenda. It'll fall as the first item under three presentations in public hearing.
Guys, hello.
Yeah, who's this?
Larry.
This is Larry. Nobody on, on the Zoom call can hear anything. It's very tumpy. You think everybody could, like Pam, Betsy, and Dan could mute their mics on their computers?
No, I can't use my, I can't use my mic on the computer. There'll be feedback.
Yeah.
Well, you're not muted, is what I'm saying on your computer.
Oh, I'm not muted.
Neither is Betsy, neither is Pam, at least from what I can see.
I don't have my computer on either. My, my computer is not even on. So, I'm looking at the tablet.
Is it any better right now, Larry? Because Matt made some changes.
No. You, you'll only see the CNET box light up when we speak in the room.
Right, but they're, but they're, they're tablets or whatever. They're working. Like, Dan just muted it. Can you talk, Dan?
So, Betsy, can you mute your Zoom call?
See, Dan is a lot better after he mutates his tablet.
So I have, I have not even joined.
I didn't touch anything.
You joined with, joined with audio and then mute yourself.
Okay.
It sounds like it was Dan's computer. It sounds much better than, I just did.
I just did. Oh, well, I can, yeah, I think I can. No, no, you're right. Now, but I'm hearing feedback.
It's, it's much, much better now.
Matt made a change on CNET's end. We're good.
This iPad too needs to be muted.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks for bearing with us while we correct these technical issues.
Can you hear me now, Larry? Is that? Perfect. Okay, great.
Yeah, everybody sounds 1,000% better now.
Great.
If you want, you can turn mine off. It's just a...
Okay, can we proceed?
Finally.
All right. Now, we have added an item to the agenda, the proposed letter to our federal elected senators and congressmen in support of the 2022 Budget Resolution and Reconciliation Package. Betsy, you want to proceed?
Is that, I see. It's under item three?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm a little...
What, did we do public comments or?
Oh, no, I haven't done public comments yet.
Okay, great, thanks.
Boy, we're...
We're not in the funny show today.
I'm having all kinds of issues today. Maybe Pam should take over as chair now instead of waiting.
You're doing well.
Okay, public comments. If there's anyone who, who wishes to address the board on an issue that's not already on the agenda, this is your opportunity. You will have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation and comments. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board?
Mr. Kayah.
Yes. Yes, how are you guys?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I am actually again talking about the pickleball issue we have. I would love to say to you simply, we are still pursuing, obviously, as I read in the CTP, we are still pursuing to remove those pickleball courts. And in my opinion, it's wrong. And probably you know that as much as other people know, there is a court within two and a half mile. I hope everybody sees my letter. I actually sent it to Doug last night. And I hope all the boards already received that letter. And in the letter, which I don't, but I don't have a lot of time to talk about it, it's to gain the benefit of pickleball for everybody. I'm sure you, I hope you already got that letter. Therefore, I really want to reconsider that, removing those courts. And if we are talking about noise, like Ms. Betsy, Anika mentioned, there is noise everywhere. I like, and I know this is not your township, but on the blue court, when that blue court gets built up next to the Seaberry Ridge, the noise is seven days a week. I would like the same measurements for that noise to be there and see how noisy it is. And we didn't actually pursue with the Ferguson Township to turn that street into a flower garden. I would like my tax paying money for my, for passing township to be utilized better than actually wasting that money, spending something, and then we are changing it again. It's definitely not going to benefit the community. When I'm talking about the community, you already have the surveys. You know over 200 people come over, tell you how important those pickleball courts. Not to put those courts close to the airport, which will be very hard for people who doesn't have a car to get there. That's not the solution. The solution is look at to the car. Look at how people utilize it. Look at how much fun it is. And I know it is not passing township to the car. It is Ferguson Township. And I would like, when I see when I'm paying tax money for my Ferguson and being utilized the way it's supposed to, that makes me happy. But when I see my tax paying money going to passing township, and we are changing left and right, just because one issue and one three neighbor who is, what, what we are hearing, friends with somebody in the board here, the board is selected to serve the whole entire community, not to service the need of individuals. Again, the board is for all communities, not for neighbor communities. That would be really a shame when we are actually sacrificing community because of three people are actually complaining, and they happen to be friends of other people. This is need to be taken, re, to be reconsidered again. It's will, it's impacting, it's already impacting the community for us. It's already, you already get your mask. Look at how many people are going to their court anymore. Hardly anybody. It's a seasonal sport. The whole entire winter, it's nobody there. But on the blue court, we hear the noise the whole entire year. And we still, this is how life is. You know, you are living close to a park, at the public park, it's better. You know, your best way, noise keeps coming and out. That's what we are paying our tax money. Not to be, are paying the tax money to go ahead and to waste it 85, and now building another court outside the area, which is nice. Clearly, we need more courts in this town. That's what makes state college unique. I, I don't personally like the idea of I'm from Athens or from Ferguson or Ayr Town. We are in the state college. When I go outside the town, I said, I'm in the state college. So I really would appreciate reconsidering your decision, what you are doing with that court. You already minimize the hours, which is like, not a bad idea what you did, but you need to keep those courts active. You actually spend money on those courts. We spend money. So when we elect the people, I love to have trust in those people that are serving the community, not personally. Thank you so much for listening to me again. I appreciate it. I might come last. My, my voice, the way I actually relay myself, sound like offensive to any other people, but I don't mean any harm by that. It's just very frustrating. Thank you so much again.
Yep. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any board members wishing to respond. So, any other people here online or in present who want to address the board on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item, three, we'll take up the added agenda item.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. So as I started to say earlier, at our last board meeting, one of our citizens, Valerie Burnett, suggested that the members of the board reach out and express our, our interest in supporting the budget reconciliation, resolution and reconciliation bill because of the dire impact that it will have on climate action. And we drafted Ms. Burnett, Burnett to draft the letter, which she agreed to do. It is a work of considerable effort and research. We took the information and just to be brief, we divided it essentially into a, a letter stating our desire for the elected officials at the federal level to, to support the budget resolution reconciliation package. And then we included most of her research and ideas in an appendix or an attachment that will accompany that letter. I want to thank Ms. Burnett for doing the research and for penning this letter. It is something that we have all seen and we are very supportive of. So at this point, I believe, do I need a motion to?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move that we give approval to mail this letter to our sitting elected officials. That would be the two senators, Senator Casey.
We're going to fax it to them, not mail it.
Mail it to them. Okay. We will deliver it to them. And that would, so that would be Senators Casey and Senators Tumey, as well as Congressman Glenn Thompson. And I'm, so I'm asking for support for that.
Is there a second?
A second. Okay.
Okay, we've moved in second to a discussion. I'll just note that one of our supervisors is not a present supervisor. Abrams was, had a, another obligation preventing him from attending this meeting tonight. So there are only four supervisors present. Any further discussion? The draft of the letter and the attachments has been delivered to each of you. If you've had a, hope you've had a chance to review them.
Yes.
Anita, do you have any comments you want to make? No? Okay. If there's no further discussion, let's have a vote. All in favor of the motion? Does your hand say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one opposed, so the motion carries. So Doug, I assume you want my signature?
There's one small type.
So I'll let you convert this to an official.
Clean it up and get it ready and get in touch with you.
I'll, I'm leaving PSS tomorrow afternoon, but I can stop by here before I leave. You can get, get it all done by noon. Thank you very much. Next item, the, on the agenda is the reporting request from Patent's representative to the CADA Board of Directors regarding service cuts in Patent Township, and that's Mark Parfitt. Welcome, Mark. We have received the report from, from, from you and from the Luana Oliva from, from CADA. So we've all read your, your letter, but go ahead and make your presentation.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate you making time tonight. I know this was a last minute addition. In summary, I didn't make a real formal presentation. I put most of the facts and data in my, in my memo to you. The bus driver shortage is very real. It's affecting us here in the center region, not only with CADA, school bus drivers, truck drivers, all across the board. We have a need to hire about 30 drivers, the last information I have. So we, we are faced on cutting routes based on just not having enough operators. Two years ago, I was here talking to you about not having enough buses. We're in a very different situation now. Last month, the, the CADA board met and had to make some tough decisions. What came out of that, the G route was suspended, which primarily serves Vista Woods, Valius Park, and Greysdale, Marysville. That, in addition to some other cuts, those weren't enough. We had to meet again earlier this month and make even more cuts. It was very difficult. I was able to support a lot of the cuts simply because we were working with simple math, drivers and, and routes. There was simply one cut that I could not support, which caused me to vote against the entire package, the way it was bundled. And that was the suspension of the A route, which serves Park Forest. As you know, CADA is a joint authority. It is currently owned by Patent Township, along with the Borough College, Ferguson, and Harris. Those are the member municipalities. And then we also contract to non-member municipalities. What I'm concerned about, and I outlined in my memo, is a significant amount of resources, especially when we don't have resources in the term, in terms of driving talent right now, going to the non-member municipalities. The, the best way I can, you know, compare this, this would be like the Water Authority running a line to Port Matilda and then saying, there's a drought, we don't have enough water. You can keep your taps on in Port Matilda. You can water your lawn. You can wash your car. But in Park Forest, we're not giving you any water at all. It doesn't make sense to me. I, again, in your memo, I have very specific details from a customer service point, environmental point, economic point, why, why I really felt we need that A route here in Park Forest. Public transit is infrastructure. So to me, again, this is just like what I said, it, it's no different than, than cutting off any of our other important infrastructure. And what bothers me most is the way how some of the, the financials of this, it's, it's, what's happening, I don't think is right. Your, in your packet, I put the Patent Township contribution for its local share this year is about $101,000. I want, I want to share with you how some of the other financials are working at CADA. Penn State, for example, has a contract with CADA to provide the bus service on campus. It's based on an hourly service rate per bus per hour. When CADA cuts bus service or eliminates bus service, Penn State doesn't pay for those hours because they're not running. The student apartment complexes are all contracted. We are trying to change the structure of that program, but as it is right now, they receive a discounted rate. And when one of their residents rides the bus, they pay. When residents don't ride the bus, they don't pay. Again, very usage based. Patent Township's contribution, that $101,000, that's not going to change. It'll probably go up next year. And what's disturbing is the service continues to get suspended Again, I'm concerned by this. I keep asking the question, what, you know, what is the benefit of being a member municipality if we continue to see service, the level of service decrease? And what I'm told is that, well, the member municipalities get a seat on the board and a voice in how the system works. So as your seat on the board, I'm here today to ask you to help me find a way to advocate on behalf of public transit users in Park Forest and other parts of Patent Township. That could take many, you know, many different approaches, but we need, we need to better represent Patent Township in the voice of the system. I want to make it clear, the, the folks at CADA, they are very passionate about public transit, very knowledgeable, and they, they truly do believe in the cause. I think the organization has just lost focus of Patent Township, and that's where I'd like us to try to get redirected. I did outline one possible solution. Again, this is not endorsed by CADA, but it's something I would, you know, be willing to take to CADA, is to expand the micro... to take to CADA, is to expand the microtransit, the CADA microtransit program, to the areas that were, that are going to receive service cuts or have received service cuts. I do know, just from being at our board meetings, the infrastructure to support that exists. We have a national fleet we can bring in. The drivers of the vans do not require commercial driver's license. It would not be pulling from the current shortage. And the technology, it's there to add new neighborhoods, just like it did when we added Wolfsburg earlier this year. There may be other solutions. If you have any ideas, you know, I'm happy to take the conversation in whatever direction you would like. That's all I have. I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mark, especially for your dedication. I know you served as our representative on CADA for, I don't know, what?
Five years.
Five years already. So appreciate all that effort you've given, especially advocating for Patent Township citizens. Any comments, questions, responses? Pam, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. Being a CADA rider, this is disheartening that Patent gives so much and is getting so little coming back. I'm in support of your suggestion for the microtransit. If they want to eliminate the A route, then we have to have something in place. We have advocated for riders to take advantage of riding the bus and CADA being one of the, actually, one of the best transit systems here. And it's so disheartening to hear the labor loss of drivers. But as we're advocating for folks to ride the bus and for us to not have the bus service in place, once you lose the ridership, they're not coming back in our area. Penn State is doing construction right about now. They're closing a lot of their parking lots. So a lot of these drivers that are driving into Penn State won't have a place to park. So they will be looking for transit, the bus services, to bring them to work and to take them home from work. And for those that live in our area, it's major. So for them to eliminate a bus service like the A, it's affecting a lot of our residents. And I think if there's a Plan A to eliminate, there better be a Plan B in place. So however we are able to help and support you in your move forward to protect our citizens, we're here for you. So tell us how we can help, how we can get the word out, have our citizens rally behind you. And I've already had, even before they made the decision, the word was out in our community that they were going to delay our bus services. From delay, we have elimination. So now this is beyond major now. So however we, whatever we can do to help you and to help our citizens who ride the bus, and I'm also talking about our disabled population that rely on the bus services. So let us know how we can help and move forward to resolve not only the elimination of the A route, but to keep services going for our constituents.
Thank you. I appreciate all those points. I agree with everything you said, especially once we lose a passenger who discovers another way to commute, it's very difficult to get them back, just like any other business, you know, you lose a customer. So trying to retain our ridership in Park Forest and trying to grow it in the other areas, you know, that's one of the reasons I feel so strongly that we need to retain this A service. And we're not talking about a short period of time. They expect this to be six months at least, if not longer, that there will not be that service.
It's not acceptable. And as we're talking about emissions, the building of energy emissions, the transportation aspect of it, they're saying 79% is passenger vehicle, 17% is freight and trucks, and for CADA, it's 4%. So we have to keep that in mind, especially for our riders. So I'm in support of whatever you need to do to keep this moving and to keep some service, you know? And I'm not talking about eliminating services from other areas, that they are forgotten because they're not. Each rider is important. But as we stand here, as we sit here, to represent Patent Township, Park Forest riders, we're here to protect you as well.
Thank you. Roger Whitman, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. So to build up what Supervisor Rob said about the importance to the individual members of our community, especially people with disabilities who rely on this service to get around at all, it's critical that we continue to support them. It's also critical not to lose the riders, not just for the personal reason, but for the climate action that we as COG, the Council of Governments, has taken a pledge to improve. My concern is the cost to CADA. I'm not insensitive to that, and I understand any increase in fees next year. The question now is, what will it cost to provide the CADA ballpark? Or maybe this is something that you can get base information from, from CADA?
Sure. The CADA, or I'm sorry.
Oh, no, versus the maintaining the A route. So, because I think we need to start thinking in terms of, not in terms of whether we can support this, but in terms of how much it will cost us to support public transit. I think we need to be committed to that, so I just want to get a ballpark.
Yeah, I can share, the CADA in the current budget, I believe is about $1.2 million out of a, I believe the total, including our subsidies, is just shy of $22 million. Now, it's very limited right now to Belfont and Wolfsburg, but the plan is to try to expand that. Again, my suggestion would be to try to get Patent in line as soon as possible as an expansion site for that microtransit, with your support.
Great. Yeah, I certainly would support any argument that you would make in that direction, and I would further suggest that you put it out to the CADA Board that this is an opportunity for us to collect data. In fact, it may be very valuable to have that going forward, the difference between CADA go and the dedicated bus route.
Sure.
Could be a combination of both. Thank you so much. Thank you for the thought and time and energy you put into this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. To Roger Teas, go ahead.
I wondered if it would be helpful if we vote to authorize a letter to CADA supporting the points that have been made here tonight about the temporary CADA go-to service, the importance, all of the points that Marcus brought to our attention.
Yeah, that was my thought, Anita, that we ought to formalize a board position in support of Mark's proposal for the CADA organization and the CADA Board to seriously consider, you know, including the riders that are going to be displaced, but who won't have service any longer when they eliminate the A route and the XG route. So if our manager could compose something to that effect, that we were disturbed by the planned cuts to the two routes in Patent Township, the A and the, I think it's XG route.
G.
Oh, just G route.
Just G, yeah.
The A and the G route. And that we strongly support our representative's proposal to ameliorate this disruption of ridership of our citizens by expanding the CADA program to riders from those neighborhoods that have lost their bus service. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that would be, that empowers me to take it back to the CADA Board and really try to show that Patent is united in this.
All of us agreed. We all spoke and agreed with you. I don't think we need a motion. We have a consensus.
Yeah, I'll work on a draft and work with both you, Mark and you, Dan, on putting something together.
Great.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Next item is 3A, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Do we have Pam Adams on board here?
We do.
Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
Yeah. You have the floor, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen, and I'm just going to make sure that this is working. So can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Presentation form.
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. So thank you. My name's Pam Adams. I'm the Sustainability Planner at the Center Region Planning Agency for COG. And tonight, I'm going to give you a brief overview and hopefully answer any questions you have about the Center Region Climate Action Adaptation Plan. And if you recall, at the end of September, at the General Forum, all 32 elected officials at the General Forum did refer this plan to the municipalities for review for the climate action and sustainability, to then consider adoption with the General Forum in November. So there's a link up there for people who are seeing this that maybe don't know where to find the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, but that link up there, crcog.net/caap is where they can read the plan. First, I do want to acknowledge all the folks who helped to create this plan. The Public Services and Environmental Committee sort of started the process, and then Climate Action and Sustainability Committee has been working on it this past year. And the technical advisory group that's shown there, they were formed by the elected officials and have been really relevant in creating this plan. So I apologize if I don't have somebody on here, but I'm trying to capture everyone who's been part of the process. Before I get into details on the plan, I'd just like to do a quick review about why we're doing this. And you may have noticed that the headlines have seemingly, this summer has been kind of a lot of crazy weather patterns that have even affected us here in Pennsylvania, the most recent one being that covert flooding down in Penn's Valley. So basically, these episodic heavy rains, sort of off-the-chart heat waves that have been happening, have really made it feel local, that the climate is changing. And the elected officials, you have recognized there's a need to do something to help keep costs under control and also to help protect the community. So this process started back in 2018 when you set the objective to create a plan to reduce our emissions and also to adapt to the changing climate conditions. And really, the plan is to focus on regional issues, pragmatic solutions, and being fiscally responsible. So we identified seven steps, and I'm happy to say after two years, I've been in this position for two years, we have developed a Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. The plan itself walks through these different milestones and steps, and I'll provide a short summary of what's in the cap and how we got here. First, we did complete an emissions inventory that's shown here for the community, and it's based on 2016 data, and shows that our community has emissions of 824,209 metric tons carbon dioxide equivalents. And you could see the biggest portion is the energy needed to heat for our buildings. This inventory does not include Penn State. They have their own inventory and action plan, so we didn't want to double count. We do collaborate, but their data is separate. Also in this chapter, talking about emissions, we show the path on how we can reach our goal. If you recall, last July, the elected officials set a climate goal to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 45% by 2030. And that's that white dotted line that you see there. And through the cap, there's 82 actions, we can meet that goal. When I speak of those 82 actions, we broke them into six sectors that are shown there on the left. And at a high level, we can get a good estimation of how we can reduce, and each of those are greenhouse gas emissions to reach our target. I do want to point out, for the clean, healthy water there, that 2%, that's pretty much already been committed to by our water and wastewater authorities on their energy reduction for water. And I'll also mention that Penn State, if you look at that energy and buildings goal, that's 32%, Penn State did reach a 35% reduction goal in their emissions, and most of that was through energy efficiency projects. So I want to just make sure people understand it is possible to meet these numbers. It's very aggressive, but it is possible. And then the last thing I'll just say is that 48% reduction that you see there for renewable energy is really going to come together with utility and state action. That is not necessarily something that we can do just at the local level. So now if we go to another chapter, it's milestone number three, where we talk about the vulnerabilities and how we need to adapt. Our vulnerability assessment was done at a high level, but it's a good starting point, and it was informed through, we got lucky, the Center County was going through the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, so I participated in that. And then Ferguson this April had a Community Resilience Building Workshop. So there was a lot of connection between those two. But what I show in this graph is not all the details, but trying to explain that in our region, the two main areas that we're going to have climate changes is in gradual increasing temperature, and those lead to hazards that have impacts on our residents and community. And the other one, which seems a little bit more relevant based on what we've seen this summer, is fluctuations in precipitation, sort of extreme rain events that we're experiencing. And again, it's those direct impacts on the left, some are public health issues, some are cost issues. Those are things that are impacting our community members, our businesses, and our residents. And so we want to help everyone figure out how to be best prepared and make sure we're able to recover quickly. So in order to create a relevant plan and help prioritize which best practices should belong in our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, we tried to engage the public and get the community involved, because we recognize this is not something local government can do alone. So for the past year, we've been working with stakeholders, municipalities, residents, and businesses to gather input. And you may recall that we did a survey where we had over 1,800 survey responses and a public forum that helped determine some of the items that are in this. And so I'll share quickly, one slide on each, to talk about some of that public engagement. So the full report, as well as executive summary, is at that link up there at the top, you know, that Sustain dash survey. People can find more information there. But I pulled out two, what I sort of see as big pieces from the survey. On the left, it shows the top 10 strategies that received the highest support in our community. And you can see there's a range of things from conserving land to improving walk- And you can see there's a range of things from conserving land to improving walking conditions, so they, there's sort of nicely split amongst all of them, but these were the top 10. And then also, I show that graph there on the bottom left, which I just really find fascinating, that while only 75% of our community, which is a great number, believe that climate change is happening, and that number lines up with what's sort of national and what we kind of expected. But even more people, 84%, believe addressing climate change would be good for our local economy, and 83% believe making decisions today, we really should be looking at those long-term climate projections. And then as far as the public forum, we had over 150 people attend, and again, there's a report that's available on our website at that link up there. And we worked with students from the Law Department and a professor, and we had breakout rooms, all virtual, where we were able to gather responses on what people felt the impacts of climate change were, what opportunities there are, and what actions they wanted to see. And then they came back with key messages, which are shown there. And so, both the survey and the forum meeting with stakeholders and subject matter experts, we really come to understand that there is a strong community will for action in our community. And I will say, I recognize completely that we did not reach everybody, we need to continue that expansion and continue having these conversations. And it's really because it's important to promote and make sure people understand the motivation and purpose for this Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. It's very beneficial to build broader ownership, so that as the decisions may get tougher or more complicated, people understand them and feel part of the process. These engagements that we've had to date has helped guide the prioritization of what goes into the cap, and we will continue to look back at that, as well as have more public engagement as we look at implementation. And then finally, having these conversations really enhances the community preparedness, makes them more ready for implementation, for that next phase, as well as being prepared to be more resilient when we have these crazy weather events happen. So, another piece, when we're looking at the actions and what to put in the Climate Action Plan, it's important to recognize that many, in fact, probably most of them have actions that include co-benefits. And so, we grouped them into these four categories, and so for each action, it identifies if they also have a co-benefit beyond just reducing emissions. And I'll give you an example from Energy and Buildings, one of the objectives is to improve energy efficiency in existing buildings. So if you look at that through the lines of co-benefits, for the property owner, if you have a more energy-efficient building, you can have reduced, lower utility bills. If as a community, we really promote and try to get more buildings to be energy-efficient, that creates jobs, that's raw job growth in that area. And if we reduce the demand for energy needed, that means there's less need for more power plants and less fuel resources used. And that ultimately can improve public health and improve the air quality. And then, I always feel it's important to put this slide, and these are the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, because while this Climate Action and Adaptation Plan might focus on climate action, again, it really shows the interconnection and the importance of all of these things, and I feel like it ties in with the co-benefits. So, the TAG, the Technical Advisory Group, the Climate Action and Sustainability Group Committee, we're always aware of these and will continue to be during implementation. So, another chapter in the plan explains the framework. When we were figuring out how to lay out the action plan, we kept coming back to sort of these four guiding principles on the left. And we really wanted the plan to talk about that we can do this, make it feel like this is something we can do. And we gave some examples with many of the chapters showing local leadership, whether it was municipal or community, and talking about things that are already happening. And we do know that partnerships are going to be key in order to make this happen, because it really is going to take all of the community. Social equity has been a big topic of discussion, and it fits in well with the actions that we've identified, and it's definitely something we need to continue to work on. And then finally, recognizing that climate change is going to impact us, we need to help our community be prepared, so that was always something that was guiding us through what actions should be included in the plan. So, I'm not going to go through all 82 actions, but I just wanted to share that the way we broke it out into these six sectors, for each sector, we have a goal, just shown there with the three, and then we have objectives. And then, under each of those objectives, there's actions. And so, there's a total of 82 actions that can help us reach that 45% greenhouse gas emission reduction, and make our community more resilient. These are the other three sectors, and again, it shows the goal for each of them and the So, the plan is comprehensive, it's going to be used for years to come, and so, we're now starting to look at implementation and how we're going to phase it in. We recommend a phased approach to build buy-in and momentum with the three areas listed here to sort of focus on in Phase One. We know that the municipalities, COG, we need to make sure our house is in order before we start promoting and talking and telling other people what to do. And so, those examples underneath the COG and the municipal operations are some things that we can all work on together. For example, I know Patton's talking about new bike infrastructure for new businesses through ordinance, and that's something we can share through the other municipalities. So, those are some of the examples there, but that's what we want to do in Year One of Phase One. We also can help disseminate information and build partnerships. An example of that is what the Solar United Neighbors Solar and EV Charger Co-op is a good example of that, because Solar United Neighbors is administrating the Co-op, but COG, Patton Township, we're partnering and trying to get that information to our residents. And then lastly, while our focus is on One and Two, we also have to start defining priorities and figure out that specific plan of action and the resources needed to get into that next phase of action for the community. So, I kind of put this image together to try to explain how the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan can work with and needs to work with your local advisory committees that are shown here. And then, information needs to come through the local government and then back into the region, so that we're all learning from each other and trying to have a unified message and some unified programs where it makes sense. So, I'm back to this slide with the seven milestones, and we're going to be entering into six and seven. And I just put this on here to definitely recognize that we have more work to do, it's a continuous process. And the Climate Action and Sustainability will really be looking at how do we best monitor, make sure we're accountable, and talk about funding to be able to do the actions that are needed to reach our goals. And then lastly, I just put this up here for all residents and individuals to know that I've, this is my third meeting, I have three more municipal presentations to give, but there is a public comment forum on our website at that link there to the left, and we're hoping to hear from people. The next step will be November 8th, the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee will discuss the updates that are needed for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and hopefully forward the updated cap to the General Forum for adoption. And at the end of November, November 22nd, the General Forum will receive a presentation and consider the adoption cap. And that is what I have, so I will stop sharing and take any questions or comments.
Questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, it's great.
Pam, as always, your presentations are always informative and outstanding. All of your hard work, I can't even begin, this is my third presentation. And with each presentation, I'm learning more and more and more and more. And as you do the next presentation with the three municipalities, how has the three that you've already done gone so far?
Good question, and thank you for your positive comments, I appreciate that. It has gone very well. I have, I've received some comments that have been good feedback, as far as more thinking about implementation and where they want to see some priorities, but it has been well-received, and people seem to like the way it's laid out, and it's easy enough to read, there is a lot there, I totally recognize that, but it's been positive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I too second what Supervisor Rob and others have said, excellent presentation. My question is, in terms of Patton Township supporting the public information and engagement aspect, we now have a communications specialist who's revising our website, are there one or two key items that you would like to see featured on our website for public response as you think about going forward, knowing that it's a wonderfully full report, but you know, what's the one or two things that maybe we need to stress on a continuing basis on our website? So if you could give that some thought, and Larry's on the Zoom here and others, but we have a great communications specialist now, and who could put some things on the website that would be the most important for getting Patton Township citizens informed and engaged. So, but congratulations, it's a wonderful effort, and kudos to our Supervisor Whitman, who's also, we know, one of the leaders in the field. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I will mention, Betsy and I have had this conversation with it too, so I think we can work on getting something to Sophie. And I know that Patton Township has been sharing and doing a great job with sharing posts that we've been putting on, so we've gotten a lot of interactions through that work, so I really appreciate that, because through social media, Patton Township has been very active with that, and I'll be happy to get something to you and Larry through Betsy and who we can talk about.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Sure, I would just like to say, having been in the trenches, not so much with Pam, she's doing all the heavy lifting, but we get to, you know, see the, see it day by day, week by week, it's really is an incredible opus, I'll put it that way. I wanted to comment on the experience that Pam and I had, Pam Adams.
Thank you.
Too many Pams. All good, a lot of Pams in this life now. I had last Saturday at the Children's Safety Fair at the, in the parking lot in Target, and kudos also, thanks to Chief Jolly and Dave Pankow for running that. So Pam Adams and I were at a table with a couple of sort of interactive posters and a craft. The kids came to work on the craft, which had to do with the little file card they could color and so on, and then attach to their light switch, and it reminded them to turn out the lights when they leave the room. While the kids were working, we were able to talk to the parents, and we worked up a little spiel that we did, essentially identifying ourselves as local government. I think that was a very powerful way to reach out, and also using the term government, and talking about details in climate action. So, reflecting back on the success of Saturday, I'm thinking of how to carry that forward, it's labor-intensive, but I think it's very effective. And I want to thank Pam Adams for, you know, adding this to her toolbox. She's usually at a desk writing, but we had really excellent interaction with the public, a lot of good questions, and hopefully we can find time to do more hours like that. Thank you.
Anybody else, including non-board members, any of the members of the public here wish to make a comment? All right, seeing none, everyone seems to be very, well, everyone's on board, I don't, we don't seem to be on board, we're all on board, Pam. And I agree with all the positive comments that have been made about all the work that you and all your other coworkers have put into this plan, very ambitious, very forward-looking. You have metric plans for analyzing data continuously, I think is very important in terms of detailing progress towards achieving these goals. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on to 3B, Draft Conservation Easement for Gray's Woods Preserve.
I'll start this. We've been working with Pat Morse, who's the Chair of the Hamer Foundation, Chair of the Board at the Hamer Foundation, and Ryan from Clearwater, who's their Conservation Easement Specialist. We've had a few discussions, we've worked out what we think is an agreement in principle for the conservation easement that would cover the Gray's Woods Preserve. I will not go through all 17 pages of it, but Alex, if you can go back to the agenda.
Yes.
And page six, I'll just highlight five items I thought were the largest, the most interest to folks. Did give you a section of references if you want to go look at the actual language, but as in most, quite a few conservation easements, the main focus of this one is that we preserve the property as is, so no transfers or subdivisions of this property are permitted, so they're expressly prohibited under Section 2.01. Typically, one of the important parts of the easement is the definition of the conservation objectives. The Township's Open Space Stewardship Committee has started on that program of defining what the conservation objectives will be for this property, and they'll be finishing that up over the next couple of months here, and we'll be inserting that into the document as, at Section 1.04. The main, one of the main points of having conservation easement is to have a holder of the easement who monitors what the owner does, we being the owners. And so, Clearwater Conservation, Clearwater Conservancy will be the holder of the easement. Their duties and responsibilities are detailed in Article Six, if you're interested in what all that means. As I noted, the Hamer Foundation was a partial funder of the acquisition of this process. They have also offered to cover costs for the holder's activities, and we'll be entering into a, probably a separate agreement outside of this easement document to cover those costs. Finally, one of the main functions of the holder, other than monitoring, is there are certain items, certain activities that the owner can undertake after review and approval by the holder. So if you see Section 604, talks about review by the holder, we have inserted an additional piece in there where the owner will also notify the Open Space Stewardship Committee if they have ideas for items that would need review. We would also, we would get, the Open Space Stewardship Committee would review the recommendation, would review the item from the owner, and they would provide a recommendation back both to the owner and to the holder for review. If they wanted, if the Open Space Stewardship Committee felt they wanted to express more deeply or personally their recommendations on a subject, the holder has agreed to meet with them if requested. So at this point, I'll look back to the board, see if you have any questions or comments that we can answer. We do have representatives here from both the Hamer Foundation and Clearwater. If they'd like to provide some comments, we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to them. And then again, ultimately, I'd ask if the board's ready, after you've asked questions and we've answered them sufficiently, that you would take action to, at this point, let's just say endorse the draft agreement. And as noted, there are still several things that need to be worked out and inserted into this agreement. And Hamer Foundation is very interested that we finish this up by the end of the year. So with that, I'll see if Ryan or Pat have anything they'd like to offer. Go ahead, Pat.
Ryan, go ahead. Ryan, go ahead. I'll let you go first.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Doug. I think you laid it out pretty well. Not, not a whole lot to add. I would, I would just, you know, reiterate, this is a really, really special property. It's part of the Scotia Barrens Biological Diversity Area. It's a property that Clearwater had advocated to be conserved for a long time. And the township took this very, very significant step of purchasing the property. And, you know, we'd be, I think, honored to partner with the township on this, to put an easement on the property. I think it's, it's a, it's a special place that I think deserves these protections. So that's all I have to say, but I'm happy to answer any, any questions that anyone might have.
Okay.
If there are no, if there are no questions, I have, I have just a couple of comments about it. So there are, there are two pots of money that are associated with this. One is the, is the amount for actually holding a conservation easement. Typically, that involves baseline documentation, a monitoring fund, so that the costs of doing the actual monitoring are covered, and a legal defense fund. Those are the typical costs of a conservation easement. And we have agreed to cover the costs. Clearwater Conservancy has provided us with a cost estimate right now. And I don't know if Deb and Ryan, if you want to, if you want to work more closely to get that to a different number. But, but it's right in, in the ballpark that we talked about, that we've been talking about since this process started. So we don't have a problem with that. We're very good with that, with that amount. The other piece of this is the proposal that Katie Albowski put forth on behalf of Patent Township for a forest management plan at $170,000. Our position on both of these amounts is when the board has voted to accept this as a conservation easement and we're moving toward actually enacting the conservation easement, that's when the money will be released. We, I want to also say, once we got this process moving in September, Doug and Betsy were very helpful, and it's, and I thank them both for the, for the effort that they made to, to make this work. And I thank the board for, for, you know, I think trying to do the right thing on this property. I really thank you all for trying to do the right thing on this property. You know, we don't want to be a micromanager on this. We want to step away from this. We want to, we want you to be the managers of what happens with this property. But we're very adamant that that $750,000 investment on, on our part, we want to see this protected. We really do want to see this protected. So that's, you know, I, I think that from, from our standpoint, you've done what we asked you to do almost. It's, you're at the point where I think that you're going to, at some, at some point, I hope in the very near future, you're going to vote on this. We did talk the last time that Doug and Ryan and I talked about what the timing of this is going to be in terms of an actual easement. Once you vote on it, Clearwater Conservancy has some due diligence that they have to do. They have to make sure that the baseline documentation is in place, whether it's, a lot of it's already there, but they got to make sure it's in place. And then, Ryan, you had some other issues that you've got to take care of, that, that are going to take, we thought two to four months was a, was a fairly reasonable estimate to, to finish the whole process. And we're good with that whole, with that whole timeframe. We think that's a, that's a good timeframe. So again, I want to say thank you. I think this is the right thing to do. Preserve that property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Comments from, from the board? Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
Yes, and thank you, Pat, for that mention of the forestry management plan. I think that's critical, and I was delighted to see that that was going to be a possibility going, going forward. So I have a couple of questions. Yeah, actually, I guess one question. The, what's the status of the grant for the implementation of the management plan? I do want to mention that I called it Katie Albowski, who I've worked with in the past in other issues, not township-related, because I know that this was an issue that she worked hard on and feels very passionate about. And I know that she's involved in the management plan. So I wanted to get a status on that and see if we had any knowledge of grant money coming in. Sure.
I'll answer that pretty quickly. That has been approved by the board, pending approval by the board supervisors of Patent Township.
Oh, great.
As soon as we, as soon as we have approval for this conservation easement, we will, I think that the best thing is for Doug and Katie and I to have a talk about how this is going to work. And then we'll cut the check. It's that simple. It's been approved. We're, we're ready to cut the check for this.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments from the board? How about members of the public? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I, I completely agree that we're on board. You know, you want to see this easement finished. And I expect all the board members will be approving it as soon as we have a finished product to review. So given the objection from the board, Doug, I think you have our consensus to go ahead and continue to work towards this final product so we can get this easement accomplished.
I'd ask for at least some kind of a timeframe here.
Can you give us a timeframe, Doug?
Oh, I think my goal is the board meets once in December, December 8th or 9th or something like that, that we'd be really close to having something. If we're not there to finalize the agreement, we meet on the first Monday in January. So those are my goals, to hit one of those meetings with, with essentially our final agreement on this easement.
Let me reiterate, we're not going to, we're not going to hold on to this forever. We're just, we're not, we're not making this offer forever. We really would like to see this.
Is that sufficient or not?
What's that, if we, if we can vote on it at the latest by January, then I think that's a, then I think that's a good goal. If we're pushing it off beyond that, we're going to start thinking about not funding this.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we'll work towards.
That's what we'll work for, towards.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, anything else on this item? Not, let's move on. Thank you very much, Pat and Ryan, and Deb, I see you on as well. 3C, COVID-19 protocols in Patent Township. Supervisor Tease, you want to take the lead on this?
Yes, thank you. The reason I asked to have this put on the agenda, for the public's benefit, since I serve on the Council of Government Committee called Human Resources, the COG Committee, they've been discussing this issue for the last several meetings. And recent trends in the country and developments right here in Center County, I think, make it appropriate for our board to revisit where we stand right now on COVID protocols. And what I'm proposing today is one action item and two discussion items. The action item that I would like the board to consider is authorizing staff to develop and do a survey of employees, a self-reported survey of their vaccination status, just as COG did. As you may know, it was included in the attachment to the agenda, but I know sometimes the public has trouble accessing all the attachments, or it might get lost. COG did do a self-reported survey of its 125 employees. 108 responded, and 90% responded. And of those 90%, 83% reported that they had been vaccinated. I'd like to suggest that we do a similar survey, again, not a requirement, not a mandate. We are asking folk if they could please voluntarily self-report their vaccination status. Why I think this is important is that as a government entity, our mission statement is to serve the best interest of the public. And we all know right now that COVID-19 is creating quite a public health and public safety issue right here in our region. I had communication today from a Patent Township resident who, whose loved one has been diagnosed with a cancerous tumor that needs to be surgically removed and would require an overnight hospital stay. She reported to me that Mount Nittany Medical Center, who has wonderful nursing, and I mean, they are doing their very, very best, but that they, the earliest that they would schedule her, and then only as a temporary appointment, was the second week of November, because they, according to her, are not having overnight surgical admissions because of the load that the hospital is facing with COVID. So they now are looking, calling hospitals outside the region to try to get a timely surgical operation to get this tumor out before the possibility that the cancer might spread. So right here in our region, the fact of how COVID is impacting not just the people who have COVID, but others who are seeking hospital care. What I think a survey would report to us, I think in some ways, it might reassure the public. When I heard the 83% self-reporting for vaccinations for COG, I thought, well, you know, that's, that's doing pretty good. And I realized that people might worry, how will the results of such a survey be used? And I think it would lead, obviously, there's no talk of mandating or requiring vaccines at this point among our staff, especially it's not possible with our union staff. And so, but to let the public know. And for some, it might reassure, for others, it might say, well, gee, if I happen to encounter one of the employees of the township and, and I need to protect myself with masking or others just because of the state of the world right now. And I was looking at national statistics, you might have noted, ABC News last night reported the very sad statistic on police deaths throughout the country, that it's the leading cause of death, more so than gunshots for our police officers, which I find truly tragic. And so when folks hear that national news, I think it can create some anxiety within them. But we know that our police consistently perform above and beyond national standards, that we have such an excellent force. And so I'm hoping that in the self-reporting, we might ease some concerns and/or with other communications that we might make to assure the public that they don't need to be anxious when they encounter one of our first responders or our first employees. So that is my action recommendation. It would obviously be confidential. It would be self-reporting. It could be modeled as the COG survey was handled. That's my action recommendation. The other two, which are discussion points that I don't know that we need to take a lot of time to tonight. But the COG Human Resources Committee is still working with COG as they explore the possibility of requiring the vaccine for, that protects against COVID-19 for new hires. Now, in our township, if we looked at that, it would obviously be non-union hires because that's something that isn't in the realm. But this is just to keep it aware that as COG continues that discussion, if they do reach a policy, because they've looked into the research, one of the attachments in today's agenda looked at how it's permissible under certain circumstances in the federal rules. But just to be aware that if COG moves in that direction, I think Patent Township should follow in their footsteps to look at requiring vaccines for new non-union hires. And the third discussion, or the second discussion item, but the third thing, is to look at the whole masking issue. The, I, one of the attachments, we all know State College is requiring it now. If it was a major concern for our Patent Township businesses, I think I would be advocating more strongly. I had a good conversation with David Panko at, at the wonderful Patent Township Safety Fair. And kudos to the chief and everyone who organized that. That was just a wonderful event. Because I had noted in some of the national coverage out in California, which has gone even more restrictive in terms of actually requiring vaccine cards to get into restaurants. But there was coverage that a couple of the business owners there said, they're relieved because the public knows their places of business are safe to come to. And I was talking to David Panko, and he said, well, they must, the businesses are doing okay here. That he did not see the lack of a masking requirement as we had earlier on in the pandemic. He didn't see that that was an important factor for businesses, that he felt people are comfortable going into the Patent Township businesses. But I think my question is for our, our particular public space here at the Patent Township building. I know right now masks are encouraged among staff if you're not vaccinated. But just to maybe at some point talk about how comfortable everybody is with what is happening within our building. But the key point that I bring before the board tonight is to request consideration of doing a survey. So we know, we know where we stand, a snapshot of the vaccination status of our employees. I remember Penn State, when COG did some urging of Penn State's requirement for vaccines for its staff. And of course, now the news from yesterday is Penn State is requiring it. But when that first came out, and Penn State said, well, what are you doing, townships? What are you doing with your employees? So I think having a survey, again, self-reported, inviting, not requiring, can be good public information for the citizens that we serve. And that is what I would like the board to consider tonight.
Thank you, Anita. I want to give the opportunity for staff to respond, if you wish. And then I'll ask for comments from the board and from the public. Doug or?
Yeah, no, we're, we're prepared to survey staff and get their input on their, and ask for their vaccination status. And we'll report that, to be able to report that back at the next meeting.
Okay. Larry or Tyler, any additional comments? Nope.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Board comments?
No.
Sounds good.
Of course, sounds good.
I think the three of us up here in person all agree, so, and I don't know that we need a motion, Anita, because Doug has already indicated that he's prepared to go ahead and, and do the survey. And then.
Very good.
Give us a report. As far as your other two discussion items, any board member wishes to address either of those? of those?
I think.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Beth.
I just think this is our first step, as Doug is getting ready to send us the information. And as we move forward, we're going like step A to step B. Thank you, Anita, for bringing that to the forefront, as you did when we first encountered COVID. You were the frontrunner to approach putting, you know, the mask to our businesses as well. And so, as you move forward to this next step and what COG is doing for their human resources, I'm looking forward to hearing their next step so we can follow suit. And thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Betsy.
Betsy, go ahead.
I just have a question. So, just wanted to get clarification. Yes, thank you, Anita. This is great, as always, taking the initiative. What are your feelings about mask requirements? Are you thinking the jury's still out? I know you talked to Dave Panko, who does represent the Patton Township Business Association. Are you recommending that we reach out to other businesses, see how the mask ordinance in the borough goes, just sort of play by year the next couple of weeks? Or, as Pam said, consider that maybe a possible second step? So your thoughts on that?
Well, I noticed in our police report for September, there were, I think, two incidents that involved conflicts over masks in the township. I don't, it's such a hot-button issue right now. I would, I guess I'd be looking to see how the public flow of things is going. My sense from the State College ordinance, you know, they required it while the area is still under high, the high transmission, and it looked like they required it through the end of November, which is when football season would bring many new visitors to our region. But I don't have any strong feelings at this point. I don't know, even if we passed something like State College did, it would only be for a month. What is the board's sense as you walk? See, I don't go indoors to businesses at all right now because my family has kind of some high-risk factors. So we are delightfully hibernating, and I do grocery pickup, so I'm really not the one to monitor how things are going inside the community business areas.
Okay.
Yeah, I just was curious about your opinion, since you brought it up. My opinion about the masks is it's, we may revisit it in two or three weeks with our next board meeting, but I would never, I wouldn't summarily take it off the table, monitor how it goes in the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I know for myself, I was downtown yesterday, and they have actual signs up on different businesses about wearing masks. My hairdresser is one of them. Big sign before you walk into her establishment, you will not without a mask. And I happened to take a photo of the poster that has been given to each businesses for college township, and I'm like, they mean, they mean business. So I'm curious to see the, you know, the feedback from that.
Great.
Okay, thank you. We're finished with that item. At this point, sorry, chief, but I'm going to take the chair as proof, and I'll get to call a short recess. Five-minute recess.
In notes, a twenty-two-year-old male was arrested for cruelty of animals. The male was actually observed on surveillance video striking a puppy. Twenty-four-year-old female was arrested for simple assault and strangulation. It stemmed from a domestic dispute with the point her boyfriend's pair did him and applied pressure to his neck with her hand. Thirty-eight-year-old male was arrested for access device fraud and receiving stolen property. The male found a credit card that did not belong to him and proceeded to charge over $7,000 worth of merchandise to that card. Our officers arrested six individuals for driving under the influence and one for retail theft. And we served one warrant of the seven that we attempted and conducted one vacation home check. Our officers did use force three times during incidents in September. All of them dealt with individuals who were intoxicated. The first one, our officers were attempting to arrest a female for driving under the influence. She was not cooperative and had to control both of her arms in order to apply the handcuffs. She also refused to let go of a lighter and a cellphone that she had in her hand. She was uncooperative at the hospital as officers attempted to walk her into the blood test. She would plant her feet to prevent herself from walking, so officers had to apply pressure to her arms and elbows to get her to walk into the hospital. Again, she continued to be uncooperative at the hospital, yelling obscenities, but there was no injuries to the female or to the officers involved. An officer had used force during a Penn State football game when they played Auburn. There was a male who was attempting to gain access to an area that he was not allowed to be, and he was directed away by the Penn State University employee. The male, who was intoxicated, began to be argumentative with the employee, and he tried to walk past her. The employee stepped in front of him, and he pushed his way past her and tried to gain entry. Our officer was standing nearby and grabbed the male by his shirt and directed him back outside of the barricade. There was no injury to or reported to the male or to our officer. And lastly, during a DUI stop, officers tested a male for signs of intoxication following a traffic stop. The male failed the field sobriety test and was passively resistant with the officer as he was handcuffed. At the hospital, the male agreed to comply with the instructions leading up to the blood test, and after the blood test, the male agreed to leave the hospital. Officers had to grab the male by the arm and attempt to lead him out of the hospital. He ended up pushing one of our officers. Eventually, he did calm down, was transported back to our station. We tight charges up on that individual. Our officer did sustain a minor injury to his hand, but there were no injuries reported by the male to be dealt with. For community relations, Officer Tuskovich and I conducted an active shooter drill at the Park Forest Middle School. Our officers provided a presence for the DJ Poly Con concert at Todd Trees. If the board recalls, you did grant a noise waiver ordinance for that event, and our officers reported very minimal issues. And it seemed like the attendance was a little bit, well, actually, a lot less than what they expected, going about four or 500 people, I think, coming up. Officer Tuskovich attended at Park Forest Baptist Community Festival, and he and I also conducted an active shooter drill at the Braze Wood Elementary School. On the training and department activities, our officers attended tactical response team training. All of our officers attended firearms training, two different dates in the month of September. Officer Basala and Officer Vardzel attended Technical Collision Investigation, which is a training we hosted down in the meeting room. We're very happy to get those two through these two classes. Officer Shoemaker retired last year, and Officer Swindell will be retiring this coming March, so we have a void to fill for reconstructionists for serious crashes. So Officer Basala and Officer Vardzel will attend the reconstruction phase, which is another two-week course at the beginning of 2022, again, to fill the void that we need for the reconstruction position. And I attended the Business Association Lunch and also the Community Campus Security Meeting. That is all of our training and department activities. We did have a performance report. Officers Pinocchio and Schaefer responded to an address on Oakwood Avenue, reported a male having a seizure. The officers quickly determined that the patient was likely suffering from an opioid overdose. Maloxone was prepared, and the officers administered it to the patient. They also gave him some oxygen, and he began to regain consciousness before EMS arrived, and then EMS took over the care of that patient. So the officers did a fantastic job identifying that that individual was in an opioid overdose and preparing the medicine for him. And just because it is the next point in our agenda here, I just wanted to maybe point out, as far as the maloxone deployments, in 2018, we had two deployments; in 2019, we had two; 2020, we had four; and up till this point this year, the one I just spoke about was our sixth for 2021. So we are seeing an increase in our overdoses where we do administer maloxone to the patient. The record list of our calls from our RMS, we see a total of 500 for the month of September. So we've been steadily seeing an increase. In August, we had 477, seeing high 400s. 500, I checked back through the past couple of years, and that's the highest amount of calls we've had in one month for at least the past couple of years. So a very busy month in September. The most frequent call for service was traffic. We had 100 traffic calls. Twenty-nine of those were related to Chick-fil-A, where we gave over 50 warnings to individuals making left-hand turns or getting ready to make a left-hand turn. And then that was followed up by 61 health and safety MS. So, again, very, very busy month, 500 calls is quite a bit, so our officers were really moving in the month of September. But overall, we had a good month, and that's all I have to provide for the police report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Pam, go ahead.
Chief, I want to say to you, I had an opportunity to go to the PML Summit. Larry was there. We attended at the Workshop of Police Policy and Use of Force. I guess I was very vocal because I told them at our workshop that we had an outstanding police chief by the name of Tyler Jolly. And believe it or not, how I described you is how I really think our community believes you are a strong leader. You are a man of integrity and honesty, and those are the words I used at this workshop. Before leaving to come home, I was approached by a husband-and-wife team who are one of the speakers, and he happened to say, Pam, you are absolutely correct. I happen to meet your police chief. He truly is a true leader and a man of integrity. So I am just letting you know, you are represented. You represent the township with the highest respect, and they say you never know who you may meet and who you may know, and thank you for being who you are and representing our township, because it was a complete honor to, that this gentleman and his wife knew of you and thought highly of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well deserved. Congratulations on that, Chief. I'm only a little worried now that you're going to get recruited away from us if your agent keeps advertising how good you are around the country.
Look, it wasn't me. I mean, the word was already out, and they knew who he was. You know, you say patent township, and they walk up to you. Larry, am I not correct on this?
Yes, you are, Pam. Yes, you are. They also did mention that he may get recruited away.
You don't have to worry about that. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anita, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I agree with everything from the profound, which is wonderful, to a small point question on the 29 warnings for Chick-fil-A. And I know that you were part of a discussion that there progress is being made, but can you help the public understand why it's warnings and not actual tickets? Is it that as tickets have been given, that the judges aren't enforcing them? Or why is it a warning? And are you seeing repeat offenders? Is there any way to? Yeah, I mean, I can appreciate the good public relations of a warning, but I just wonder why it's not a ticket.
So, just to clarify, there was 29 incidents at Chick-fil-A, and we gave over 50 warnings. So 29, that's just how many times our officers were dispatched there for traffic issues or we try to also track, again, how many warnings. So if they go and give five warnings, they pull a traffic incident, we sort of document that, and we have that information available. As far as why we're not necessarily citing everyone, we have issues like there in the past. It is such a transient population here that for us to be able to say, I'm sure there are repeat offenders, I can't say that there never are, however, we just see such a transient population. When we stalk them, tell them that they're not, make that left turn, I truly do believe a lot of them don't know. They're not from the area, they're passing through, students maybe who returned and didn't realize that we put that into effect maybe while they were gone. So we're trying to be as proactive as possible to get the word out there. We did a big blitz where we did ticket for two days, about over 50 vehicles, and really didn't see that making much of an impact. So it didn't necessarily help when we did ticket heavily, so we're trying to make sure we can get the word out there. People were not happy, obviously, when you just, as I said, we understand that that's not necessarily a great experience for the motoring public, but we think it's just as effective to make sure that we stalk and tell folks that, you know, that it's illegal and what they're, they need to move on from that left turn.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Chief, and now let's move on to B for B, participation information for the national opioid settlement. Doug, are you going to take this?
Yeah, I'll just cover the highlights of this. Two national settlements have been negotiated. Part of that negotiation is that these funds will be distributed to states, and the states have the options of distributing those funds to municipalities. Some municipalities, larger ones, obviously very large cities, have filed their own lawsuits and are actually parties to these settlements. Patent Township has not ever been a party to any lawsuit, but since we are a municipality that has a population over 10,000, as dictated by the settlement, we have the opportunity to opt in or opt out. It's not clear from information I've reviewed from the Commonwealth that we will receive any direct funding, but if we opt in, it will increase the share of the total settlement that does go to Pennsylvania. As Chief Jolly noted, we have been impacted by this. I think for the last 10 years or so, I've been asking Senator Corman what the state was going to do about opioid incidences, but we don't need to go through there. As said, the settlement is now on the table. If the board would like to take action, what we need to do today is designate an individual. If we want to be part of the settlement, we need to opt in, so to do that, the board should designate an individual to make that commitment to the Attorney General that we will opt in for purposes of the settlement of these lawsuits.
Okay, comments from the board? First of all, opting in or not?
No brainer.
Bethy says opt in.
No brainer to me.
Barb says opt, and Anita, opt in. Okay, I agree, so we've settled that, so who would be authorized to sign documents?
Maybe our manager?
If you'd like to designate me, that's fine.
Yeah, I agree, because, you know, there's turnover on the board, but you'll be our manager for at least another year and a half or more, so you're now designated as our...
Why don't we just, because we are dealing with a legal matter, ask the board to make a motion and approve that by vote?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Everyone said aye, so there's no objections. You're now are designated into...
There may be a resolution required at some point down the road, but I will keep you apprised. Thank you.
Okay, next item, 5A, Director of Public Works vacancy.
I'm working on, I've talked to several members of the Public Works Department, getting their ideas and about what we should be looking for. At this point, I'm very strongly leaning towards taking Public Works and actually making it into two separate entities. One would be Public Works Operation, beheaded by the Public Works Director, and the other side would be headed by the Township Engineer slash maybe called Community Services Department at this point, which would include the planner, zoning officer, and cover those non-public works operations things. So I'm working on setting up the job descriptions for those two things, the organization chart, and then I'll be talking more with the Public Works Department personnel and getting their feelings. And I know we have some in-house people who are interested in both positions, so I will be talking to them more on that. So for now, I'm not quite where I thought I was going to be when I, I think we talked a little bit during the exact session, but I think I'm in a place where I think makes sense, so I've got a framework that I'm working on.
Would there be a budget impact?
I mean, are you... No, not at this point. I'm not seeing a big, it's no more personnel.
No more personnel.
It's just the same personnel, but...
Okay, I understand.
Two...
Division of structure to two parts.
Yep, yep.
Any other comments or questions for the manager about this?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Next is 5B, draft ordinance for regulating permitting small cell wireless facilities in the public right of way.
I've been feeding you parts of this for the last month. Thank you for your patience on this. We're at the point now, I did finalize the draft ordinance, there was a copy of that included in your agenda. The next action would be to advertise for potential adoption at the next board meeting on October 27th. Ask the board just to take action to direct me to advertise that for the next board meeting, and we'll put that on the agenda as an action item.
Questions or comments from the board? Or the public? Seeing none? If everyone agrees, if there's no objections, you go ahead and advertise the ordinance for adoption at October 27th board meeting.
Thank you.
Let's move on to items 7, 8, American Rescue Plan expenditures.
Yeah, just a couple of updates, and I'll turn it back to the board. Originally, we were supposed to report at the end of October. There were lots of questions and comments flying back and forth between Treasury, between all the municipalities and Treasury Department. Treasury, at the end of September, moved that reporting deadline to next April, so that gives us lots of breathing room to move forward on a deliberate pace. And then I also had provided the schedule that I've been using and sharing with you and updated it to show that change. With that, I asked the board to discuss amongst yourselves how you, ideas you have for how we would split up that money into the many different pots that are looking for money.
Yeah. Yeah, last board meeting, Doug provided us with a model, which some board members had criticism of, but not that you did all that good work in getting the survey responses, you know, divided up into the various categories, the appropriate categories. So that's good information for us. I'm not sure if the board members spent any time since then in reviewing those and coming up with a, with an alternative plan or your own proposals. We have some proposals already submitted by board members, which Doug has indicated. So I'm asking if the board wishes to have a formal discussion at our next board meeting, end of October. I mean, we'll be doing budget planning through November, so we'll need to have some ideas to propose for the 2022 budget.
Sounds good.
Could include or not include, you know, some proposed spending of that ARP money. Doug, you already indicated to us that if no, what's the word? If no definite decisions are made about specific spending proposals, that those funds can simply be carried into the budget as unallocated and that we would be doing the allocations during the year in 2022 or maybe even 2023, because we don't have to spend all the money until the end of 2024. So is the board ready or willing to do, have a discussion about this next month, next meeting, in two weeks? Yes? Shake your head. Anita? That work? Okay, let's do that. So I'm the... Go ahead.
Would it be useful for me to pull together those specific items you mentioned that I think Anita had put forward some, I think you had put forward some, and I think Bethy had put forward?
Were, is that included in what you gave us two weeks ago at the board meeting?
It wasn't highlighted, it was in that long, it was in those long lists of projects. You know, just I could, if that would be helpful to you, I could pull together those specific things and just give you a number, what that adds up to, and then, you know, there's still a balance of X that needs to be...
Yeah, well, itemize them and then give us the total, yes.
Yeah.
And also, I don't think Pam or Elliot actually made a specific proposal...
No, not yet.
For a particular spending proposal, although you, I think, indicated your interest in certain areas. So, yeah, so your homework, board members, we're going to take this up in two weeks, and let's have a, let's have some serious discussion about specific spending items we should consider and prioritize them. I mean, is this something we need to do right away, or is it something we can develop over the coming, you know, this coming year, 2022, or, you know, whatever? Let's have a discussion. Okay. Okay, everyone agree? Anita, hand raised, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. A process question. On October 27, our Housing Task Force will be bringing our report and recommendations, and the task force itself is recommending the three funding projects that I previously introduced to the board for First Time Home Buyers, Habitat for Humanity, and something for the Center County Housing and Land Trust. My question is, we have the leaders from those organizations, Stephanie Foss and Missy Chauviner, who are very willing to come before the board to discuss specifically the use of those funds should the board grant them. Is that something that the board is open to having, and would you want agenda time for that? Or is just the representation of what they've said in writing sufficient? Because they are willing to come before the board and answer questions and explain why these monies would be targeted for patent township residents and why they think they're important.
Opinion? Go ahead.
My sense is to not have them lobby specifically. If they did, we would, we could open ourselves up to other people coming into lobby, and it would, it's just a matter of time.
Sure.
I think the decision that we make is prioritizing is on the merit of the overall project and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
The individual details would not determine my thoughts, but, yeah. Okay? I hear where you're coming from, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
I agree.
Any other comments or questions? Not, let's move on to the CIP. Doug?
I'm going to let Larry do this one.
All right.
All right, Larry. Take the stage.
You'll have to unmute yourself, Larry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. Great, so the capital improvement plan for 2022 to 2026, just to give you a little bit of background, it has, you know, it's a tool that we use to look at major projects or significant operational increases several years in advance so that we have an idea in the future what funding we may need to get, whether it's a tax increase or whether we'll have to borrow money to do these projects. So it gives us a chance to prioritize the projects in the face of limited funding. The first part of the CIP is the manager's recommendation, and it consists of two parts. It consists of the capital projects proposed, significant increases in operational expenditures proposed for 2022 to 2026, and the forecast of the real estate tax rates for those years. So we have some ongoing projects during the system, one being the police records management system, our continued projects for bike lane development, MS4 stormwater projects, the Brunel-Fox Hill Road intersection improvements, which I think are winding down, I would hope, Todd Trees corridor improvements, DeHathrop and Woody Crest improvements, and the Equine Hospital. The new project for this year is the Cricklewood Drive pedestrian access, and this project completes an alternative analysis to see which option best suits Cricklewood Drive, whether it be a dedicated bike lane or sidewalks or shared view paths that we would construct in the following years. And that has $1,111,750 from 2022 to 2026. The second project is to re-codefication of the code of patent township for $18,000 in 2022. That's to review and update our code to make it more relevant and readable. Our emergency generator has been a run for a while, so we need to make some upgrades to that to $35,000 in 2022. And that includes new controller technology and other items. The next project is to consulting and support for the new records management system. As you know, we installed a new system before Tyler time, so that went into, that went into, they had picked that, and we installed it, and it never really worked. So we are looking for a new police records management system, and this $41,000 in 2022 is for a consultant to help identify our needs, identify vendors... is for a consultant to help identify our needs, identify vendors, and then do project management and support through to the implementation of the new management system. The next project is to replace the 2008 Toyota Prius, which we had originally in 2023. We've moved it to 2022, and this also includes us to investigate options for replacing it with, with either another hybrid or an electric vehicle or other alternative fuel vehicle. We also will investigate grant and rebate opportunities. The next new project is one that we're looking for in 2023, and it's a canine patrol, and this would secure a canine that is trained in narcotics detection and tracking. Also, the dog can be utilized at community relations events for positive community engagement. In the report, in the CIP, I have projected no tax increases until 2025, where we would have one-tenth of a mil increase or 1% increase for 2025, and then no increase for 2026. The projected year in cash balance, if you remember, we, we try to keep this between 8% and 12%, so these numbers are pretty good, ranging from the 4% in 2026, which I'm sure it's far enough out that we can address that, to a 15.4% in 2022, which would be next year. With that, that's the end of my report. If you have any questions or comments, I, I will take them now, and anything questioned on the canine, you could ask.
You want to stop sharing your screen, Larry, so we can see each other?
I can do that.
I'll just comment, Larry did put the American Rescue Plan monies in here as revenues, but they weren't directed or, or tied to any specific project, so, well, you know, we did an all-in with the understanding there may be American Rescue Plan projects that may push some of these things. But our, our first, our first goal would be just to start sliding things back and, you know, that will probably cascade certain projects, but that's, that's the way these things normally do work, so.
Thank you, Doug. I forgot to mention that, I did want to mention that.
Okay, Anita, you have your hand raised, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, this is such an excellent report and so well formatted, formatted, so clear to see if we have any public people looking in on this video, I urge them to, to review this report. Well done, Larry, well done, Doug. This is really a fantastic summary and very clear itemization of money and priorities and the need. I have a question on the canine proposal, and I'm sure there are very good reasons for this that I think just would be helpful to explain to the public. Is there any way to, to share the wonderful dog with other townships? You know, Red Rover, Red Rover, send our dog ride over, so that we could share costs and possibly the opportunity, because I'm sure other townships are facing the same drug challenges that we are. I'm sure there are reasons why this isn't possible, but I think it'd be helpful for the public to understand that, if you could address that, Chief Joel.
Yeah, so in Center County, right now, we do not have a dog trained in narcotics detection for, for, available for our use. Penn State University Police Department has two bomb-sniffing dogs, but they are not narcotics, they are only for explosive device detection. So there definitely is a need for it. Our, our drug detectives who work in the area, patrol officers who encounter things on traffic stops, it'd be an fantastic resource for us to have. We are not, again, we're not looking for a dual purpose, we want it to be a single-purpose dog. By single purpose, I mean that they would be for narcotics detection and tracking. It would not be a bite dog that you sometimes see in some police shows, so it wouldn't be an aggressive dog, hence the community engagement. You can take it to things like the safety fair and feel confident having users will be able to interact with the canine handler and the canine. But to specifically address your, your question, yes, we would absolutely look to share the costs. So upfront, a dog, its training cost is about $12,000 to $15,000, depending on what kennel and what, where you go to get the, the dog and the training. Since its main purpose is going to be for narcotics investigations, we would probably reach out to the district attorney's office and to see if we could use some of our drug forfeiture money for the purchase of the dog. We have already, already had conversations with the police to, if, if an agency did go on this venture and, and get a canine, to possibly explore different avenues of maybe some way to offset some costs. Because, yes, we would make the dog available to the other agencies here in Center County, including Bell Park and Spring, and then the Ford in the Center Region. So that's why we, we kind of scheduled this for 2023 to maybe try to come up with some more concrete answers to this, but those conversations have already started.
So once again, patent township is taking the lead and creating something really needed, not just for patent township, but for the region. Kudos, another first. Well done, thank you.
I have a question, Chief. Some little specifics on, on the details for the expenditure. Does, does that $91,000 include the salary for the patrol officer who will be in charge of this police dog?
That, that does not. So the initial upfront cost, the $77,400, is mainly for equipment, so we would need to equip a new car. So we went with, I tried to quote out a hybrid FE, and then there's also obviously a lot of equipment that goes along with, with the dog, different temperature control, there's different door mechanisms, so the 77-4 is for equipment, including the vehicle, new computer, new radio, and that would be basically that one-year expense once we get that up and running. Hopefully, we'd be able to have that for, you know, maybe the next 10 years.
Would one of your current patrol officers be responsible?
That would be the idea, yes. We would not add.
You're not going to hire another person?
Nope, no, that's correct.
Just hire the dog.
Yeah.
That is correct, yep.
There's, it's some overhead costs that come along with having a dog. The officer who is the handler, the dog will live with the officer, the handler will take care of the dog on a daily basis. So typically, we would pay this officer, I can't remember, a few hours overtime each week would, would cover the feeding of, feeding and care of the dog and, and taking it to the vet as needed, so. But, yeah, no, Tyler's identified an officer who's expressed an interest, and so, you know, if we, Kate stays in the program, we'll be working with, with that officer towards this. And when, wherever the dog goes, the handler goes too, so we don't really share the dog, we share the off, we share the team, the handler and the dog.
Any other comments or questions?
So that was my question, Doug. Where would the dog live and who would be the handler? And hopefully, the officer that is the trainer or the person that is going to be taking care of this new officer, we hope that their trainer will not be leaving us anytime soon, taking along with the, our new officer, as, you know, when we say our dog, he is literally a officer, so I'm looking forward to a little more information on the care.
Yeah.
And, and this program sounds great.
Yeah, it's a big commitment for the officer, so, you know, we want to, we'll move forward slowly and make sure he understands everything that's involved and all the expectations, so, but I think it's a good, it's a good improvement, it's, I think, in terms of community engagement, it's a very good way to do it, and I think, you know, having a dog that's available, a non-aggressive dog, in my viewpoint, is better than an aggressive dog.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anita, go ahead.
Yes, I also had a, a question, comment on the Cricklewood Road proposal, which I think is excellent, but, you know, we've also heard from Valerie Burnett in the last couple meetings about the concern to improve the, the rail trail there, which is also a Toftrees matter. I'm just wondering where that might fall in a priority list, or if there was consideration to adding part of it to the CIP in future years going forward. I'm presuming Cricklewood is a much higher priority for many reasons, but I didn't want the concern about the rail trail to go by the wayside, so to speak.
There is funding in there for the rail trail. There is one piece of the rail trail we still do not have an easement or ownership of, so we need to work on that, that would be the first thing we do. And I've been talking to folks, looking into grants and things. We'll give you a more detailed report on, on how all those projects fit together. There's also money in the CIP for, you know, pedestrian improvements on Toftrees Avenue. The, the Cricklewood project kind of grew out of the Cricklewood traffic calming. After talking to folks and talking about several different alternatives, it was finally, I think, more or less clear for us that people still didn't feel safe walking on, directly on the roadway, so the, the idea was, well, what else could we do to, for pedestrians to feel safe and secure while they're walking? And that's where, that's really where the project came from. So it's, it's probably one of those projects that would slide, be one of the first ones to slide out a year if we need to make some room and some financial room in the budget for, for some of these ARP projects also.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, no one's suggesting any changes, Doug, so?
No, but we'll bring you back some more information on the, the Belfont Central Rail Trail, what's in there about that, and, you know, all those pedestrian, let's say all the pedestrian-related and bicycle-related issues in the Toftrees area.
All right, moving on, consent agenda. Any board member wish to pull a specific item from the consent agenda to be discussed separately?
I.
Seeing none, then we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, let's have a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, no opposition, so the motion carries. Moving on, manager's report.
Thank you. A couple pieces of correspondence that were included. Comcast is looking for some grant funding from the Commonwealth to extend service to a few homes in the area. Been talking with their local representative. They're supposed to be, see, it's not missing a copy of email I did send to Senator Corman, Senate Bill 775, which I cannot remember exactly what it was about at this point. Announcement, we've been doing oak wilt removal and mitigation at three sites in the township or almost complete. It was a bad year for oak wilt, so we probably spent close to $50,000 on oak wilt mitigation this year, so. Like I said, staff been doing an excellent job of taking care of what needs to be done. Included item C, the third quarter housing starts, again, for the one, two, third quarter in a row, we've had a decrease there on the right-hand side. Overall trend is still up, but decrease is down. Some of that, I think, is a reflection of there aren't a whole lot of single-family lots available in the township right now, so. Upcoming events, if you haven't heard, bulk waste collection was supposed to be next week, has been postponed. We do not have a date yet on when that will occur. Hopefully, it will be early November, but COG is still talking to Waste Management on that issue. Trick or Treat is October 31, which happens to be Halloween, so from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then various office, open office close days from now until the end of the year. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Doug? I ain't seen none in the committee reports. Anyone wishes to elaborate on your report that you've submitted? I will, I didn't write up a report on finance, but we did our three budget hearings to cover all the COG agencies, and we're having our final, our fourth and final meeting tomorrow morning to review all the different questions and issues that the Finance Committee members brought up or staff to respond to, or they made a, a member made a specific request to drop a certain item from, from the, the budget, and we did, we postponed any votes on any of that until this wrap-up meeting tomorrow morning. So after tomorrow, the, the budget, final budget will be presented to Exec Committee, and then Exec Committee will presumably decide to forward it to General Forum, meeting at the end of the month. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for that. That's Yilmun's job.
Yeah, yes, it is. I mean, my, my, last year was my first exposure to that, after Downsborough left the board, because he did all that Yilmun's work before. So this, this time, it wasn't such an onerous task. It's still a lot of work, but it's not hopeless. Any other comments or questions? Moving on, just a reminder, which Supervisor T. has already mentioned, the Housing Task Force will be making their presentation to us in two weeks. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.